Okay, now we're at seven o'clock, so we will be, begin our meeting. This is a meeting of the Redevelopment Agency of Tewa City, meeting in a business meeting, Wednesday, May 3rd. Meeting is being held at Tewa City Hall in the City Hall Council Chambers and also being broadcast on the Tewa City YouTube channel. So we'll start with a roll call. Board Member McCall.
Present.
Board Member Hanson.
Present.
Board Member Brady.
Present.
Board Member Graff.
Present.
And Board Member Manzio, and I'm also present. First item on our agenda is Resolution 2023-02, a resolution of the Redevelopment Agency of Tewa City, approving an agreement with Rocky Mountain Power for electric powerline improvements in the Tewa City Commercial Park presented by Jared Stewart, our Economic Development Director.
Good evening, Council, thank you. So this, um, this, this contract with Rocky Mountain Power, I'll just give some brief context. Essentially, it's relocating an overhead powerline that is on the property that we are selling to Lightneer Poma. And as part of that, that sale, they said they'd really like that relocated, right? So we said, okay, sure, we can, we can relocate that powerline. Essentially, it's about $83,000 to Rocky Mountain Power to relocate that. In addition to that, and separate from this, um, uh, this particular resolution, we'll, we will have to pay for a survey, to have a surveyor, um, get an alignment for what the easement of that line will be as we relocate it, and then also pay for conduit, um, to put that in. So those will be in addition to this, and I think we'll probably, you'll hear more from us on this project, um, as we get those other items. That's all I have, though, unless there's questions.
Questions?
Nope.
Comments? Okay, then we entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2023-02.
Second.
It's been moved by Board Member Brady and seconded by Board Member McCall, so we'll take a vote. Board Member McCall.
Aye.
Board Member Hanson.
Aye.
Board Member Brady.
Aye.
Board Member Graff.
Aye.
And Board Member Manzio, and I also vote aye. Thank you. And second is Resolution 2023-03, a resolution of the Redevelopment Agency of Tewa City, Utah, tentatively adopting a tentative budget for fiscal year 2023-24 and establishing the time and place of a public hearing to consider its adoption, presented by Debbie Nguyen, Executive Director of the RDA.
Thank you, Chairman, and just for the benefit of the audience, as you know, in just a few minutes, we will have our regular City Council Business Meeting. This meeting that's being held right now is our Redevelopment Agency meeting, and these five individuals here, as they serve as your City Council members, they also serve as the RDA Board. They are the board members for our Redevelopment Agency. As, and as my role as Tewa City Mayor, I serve as the Executive Director of that Board. So as you hear them saying chairperson, or then councilperson, you'll just hear different titles, they, they do a lot of different jobs, we kind of all do. So, um, what I'm just going to present here this evening is the resolution, um, for the Redevelopment Agency to adopt the tentative budget for fiscal year 2023 to 2024, and this resolution will establish the time and place of a public hearing to consider its adoption. So the, uh, date that is set for the public hearing and for the final adoption will be the 21st day of June of this year, 2023, at 7:00 PM here at the Council Chambers. I know that you have just barely received this tentative budget, and in the next few weeks, we'll be discussing and looking over all of those numbers. There is just one thing that I wanted to mention to you this evening that I think is very significant. You are going to notice, um, on the, the spreadsheet, that there is a significant increase in the projected revenues for the RDA, this is the depot area that we have at the Peterson Industrial Area. The increase in revenue this year has been over $1 million. That is very significant, and the reason that that has happened, there are three different reasons, really. One is the new development that has happened, the new businesses that we have brought to the depot, many thanks to, um, EDC Utah, Economic Development Corporation of Utah, also Jared Stewart, who is our Economic Development Director. There has also been an updated assessment by Tewa County, so we are grateful for that time, that they reassess the values of those. And then there has also been a, a huge increase of the rehabilitation of those existing buildings, which many of us know were built in the early 1940s, um, for the depot and the war effort, they have been rehabilitated by the Peterson Group. And again, that raises the value of those buildings, and they, those businesses pay 100% of the cost. Just so that you know, 27% of that increase was attributed to Carvana all by itself. So 100 acres that sat out there and they paid pennies on what that value was, now 27% of that over million dollars was attributed to Carvana. So, uh, as you look at that budget, you'll see that 1.38 million of the projected revenue will be placed in the fund balance, again, to address RDA issues and pay balances on some bonds. And we will discuss all the specifics about what that budget, uh, will be on our May 17th work meeting, so that's where we'll start those discussions. So I will just leave it to you, if you, unless you have any questions, um, to vote on this
There any questions? Okay, just for the public's sake, too, that we just approve a budget so that it can get out in the public, and then we talk about it during the interim and before it's actually officially approved. That's why it's tentative. Okay, so we entertain a motion.
Uh, Madam Chair, I move that we approve Resolution 2023-03, a resolution of the Redevelopment Agency of Tewa City, Utah, tentatively adopting a tentative budget for the fiscal year 2023-2024, and establishing the time and place of the, of a public hearing to consider the adoption, its adoption.
I'll second.
Thank you. There's a motion by Board Member Hanson and a second by Board Member Brady, so we'll vote on that. Uh, Board Member McCall.
Right here. Oh, aye. Now get it out of me.
One of the, one of the three.
One of them.
Board Member Hanson.
Aye.
Board Member Brady.
Aye.
Board Member Graff.
Aye.
I also vote aye, Board Member Manzio, and so that one passes, thank you. And, uh, next on our agenda are the minutes from the March 1st, 2023, RDA Business Meeting. If there are no corrections, I would entertain a motion to approve those.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes from March 1st, 2023, the RDA Business Meeting. I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Board Member Graff and seconded by Board Member Brady to approve the minutes from March 1st, 2023. Uh, Board Member McCall, how do you vote?
Aye.
Board Member Hanson.
Aye.
Board Member Brady.
Aye.
Board Member Graff.
Aye.
And I, Board Member Manzio, and I also vote aye, and that will adjourn our RDA meeting. Thank you.
All right, the hour being 7:08 PM on Wednesday, May 3rd, 2023. We're now meeting as a Tewa City Council in a business meeting. This is being held at the Tewa City Hall in the Council Chambers located at 90 North Main Street. It's also being streamed electronically on the Tewa City YouTube channel. Our first item is the Pledge of Allegiance, if you'll please rise and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Our second item is a roll call. Councilwoman Manzio.
Present.
Councilman Graff.
Present.
Councilman Hanson.
Present.
Councilman McCall.
Present.
And Councilman Brady, I'm also present. Our third item, item is the Mayor's Youth Recognition Awards, this is presented by Mayor
Thank you, Council. Now the fun part of the meeting. So you see how business works at the city, so if you, um, would like any, you know, something to do, if you don't have anything to do on a Wednesday evening, come down here and see how the city works. It, it is very interesting. Um, the, the only negative part that might be is that you really get hooked on these meetings and you start coming to all of them. That's what happened to me. I just loved how the government worked, and, and that is why I'm where I'm at today, so awesome things happening. But the funnest part of City Council is when we are able to recognize youth in our, in our community. And I have learned that, you know, we, we talk about people that we look up to and that we learn things from, and a lot of times, it's somebody that's older and wiser and that we can learn about good things that they have done, and we try to emulate them. And what I have found out is that I want to be like you, you young people, because you've got it all together, and, and we're so proud of the, the, the youth in our community, we certainly are. So tonight, we have three youth that we would like to recognize, and first, I would like to invite Chief Day, Tewa City Police Chief, to come and help me give out these awards this evening. Um, our police department has a very important part of a program that is taught in the school system called Second Step, and the officers are there to help the students understand how important it is to stay away from drugs and alcohol and say no. They also teach you a lot about respect and how to be good to other people, and obviously you have learned that, because we can see by who you are. All right, first, I would like to invite up Tanner Lay. Tanner, would you come up? I have a backpack here that's got all kinds of fun stuff in it, and then... Okay, I want to tell you a little bit about Tanner. Tanner was nominated by Principal Gaily from Scholar Academy. Principal Gaily shared that Tanner is always willing to help his teachers and has a positive attitude. His positive attitude affects others, and he is always encouraging his peers. Tanner helps with the after-school intramural programs and helps teachers with getting the classes prepared. So you know, you can just do the minimum at school, but that's not what Tanner does. He goes over and above to make sure that people are loved and accepted, and he's there to help them when they need help. So congratulations, Tanner. And now, I would like to ask his parents, Brandon and... Krista, Krista. Brandon and Krista, will you please stand? These are Tanner's parents, and please give them a round of applause. Okay. Now we have, this one's, this one is, is also awesome. We're gonna do two at once. We're gonna welcome up Gabriella Ella Castino. And we also want Addison, and Addison, tell me, is it Thelen or Thi- Thelen? Taling. See, it's not even close to it. It's a TH, see? Now I'm gonna tell you why we had two come together. I think they're friends. What do you think? Addison and Ella were nominated by Principal Goss and the sixth grade team, Amber Warren, Pablo De La Cruz, Brandy Reidel, and James Black from Middle Canyon Elementary. Principal Goss said that these two girls noticed that there was often a lot of garbage left at or around the school grounds. They took the initiative of starting a cleanup crew for Middle Canyon Elementary School. Setting up the club took quite a bit of work from these two, including getting a faculty advisor, permission from the principal, making flyers to hang around the school, creating permission slips, and working every Friday to make sure the schoolyard is continuing to be picked up and more beautiful. Addison is such an energetic student who is constantly seeking opportunities to be helpful for her classmates or for the school in general. She is super positive and kind. Yeah. Ella is a great student who is always worried about the school and her classmates. She is a great help for anyone who needs it at any time. She is also very kind and positive all the time. Okay, I'm gonna give you this one in just a second. So we would like to recognize Addison's parents, Eric and Heather. Would you please stand, give them a round of applause? And Ella's mom is Stevie Jo. So for those of you that are here tonight, I just want to thank you for being here to support these young people. We know how important it is to have a great team around us. I love that all three of these talked about the positive attitudes that these young people have, and I will tell you, um, it's hard to keep a positive attitude sometimes, when we just live day to day and we see some of the negative things around us. To stay positive is just very important, so thank you for your example and for being positive. Don't stop doing that, keep being positive, because it does bring those around you that are not feeling very good one day, that they are feeling better because of your positive attitude. So thank you very much. So tonight, as you heard at the introduction of the meeting, we are live streaming, I guess we call it live streaming, on YouTube. We have a YouTube channel, but you can go back at any point, um, and watch, if you'll search Tewa City Channel, you'll find it much easier than just Tewa City, otherwise you'll get tons of stuff. But Tewa City Channel, and then you can go back and let all of your friends and your family watch you receiving this award tonight, okay? That'll be on, be on the video. But we also are grateful to our local newspaper, The Transcript Bulletin, because they are going to run your photo in The Transcript Bulletin, a photo that we're gonna take right now. And we're gonna invite the Council and you to come out into our rotunda. So, couple of things. One is, take all your stuff and hand it to your moms or your sisters or someone there with you. They can hold that for you while you get your certificate, if you'll just bring your certificate with you. We're gonna let you hold that, then we're gonna go out, like I say, into the rotunda, and family members, get your cameras out, get your phones out, they're not cameras, they're phones, but cameras on the phone. Bring your phones out, we're gonna take as many pictures as you want. So we're gonna take a short break, have the Council, and we'll go out and take some pictures. So we'll meet you out there in the rotunda.
All right. We'll move on to item four, which is our public comment period. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. You state your name into the mic and then you sign the paper over here with your information. So, the time is now the public's. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public comment period and we will move on to item five, which is a public hearing in motion on ordinance 2023-18, an ordinance of Twilla City adopting a wastewater impact fee facilities plan and a wastewater impact fees analysis and amending Twilla City Code Chapter 4-15. This is presented by Jamie Grandprey, the Public Works Director.
Good evening, council. I think we've got Fred. Do we have Fred online for this or? Just wanted to check really quick to see if we have Fred.
Able to hear me?
Yeah, so what we've done this evening is we've got Fred Phil Pot with Birmingham. Louis Young. Yeah, Robertson, Birmingham, here to present the impact fee last work session two weeks ago. I kind of just talked about it in work session and so we now have the public hearing in motion on the ordinance. And so, we've got Fred just to kind of go over that really quick with us before we get to the rest of it. So, I will turn the time over to Fred if he's ready to go.
All righty. I'm not sure if you can hear me on your end.
Yes.
Okay. Let me share my screen here. All righty. And how about being able to see my screen now?
Yeah, we see that, Fred.
Perfect. All righty. So, yes, as Jamie indicated, we're presenting the wastewater impact fee facilities plan and impact fee analysis. And you also have the ordinance potentially adopting the new impact fees or revised impact fee schedule. As you're aware, many of you are probably aware that the Impact Fee Act requires that we complete an impact fee facilities plan and a proportionate share analysis, which we call the impact fee analysis. That information is what is utilized to update your ordinance. In addition, the Impact Fee Act requires specific language to be found in the ordinance as it relates to credits and additional considerations as it relates to impact fees and data that may be provided from the development community as it relates to impact fees. So, our role was to help bring the planning level information from the master plan and information from contract engineers and your staff into an impact fee facilities plan and then conduct the proportionate share analysis to determine the revised impact fees. To do that, we look at these main components and typically all impact fee analyses go through this process, which is looking at your service area and demand, identifying levels of service, looking at your existing facilities and conducting inventory analysis to determine any excess capacity. Then we look at future capital facilities and any financing necessary to fund those future capital facilities or any financing that may have been used in the past. In addition, we need to look at other revenue sources that may have been utilized to fund infrastructure and provide necessary credits or considerations for those alternative funding mechanisms. The impact fee process, we're here towards the tail end of this, looking at the public hearing and adoption process. Prior to this, you've had a work session with regards to the impact fees. We went through the appropriate notice of intent and completion of the impact fee documents and certification. And again, we're here at the public hearing stage. If you choose to adopt the proposed impact fees, then there's a 90-day wait period before those become effective. So, looking at the specifics for wastewater, the service area includes all areas within the city. The proposed level of service is based on the various system requirements for treatment and collection. And we have to make sure that the proposed level of service matches the existing level of service, which we've reviewed that and the IFA, the impact fee analysis does that. We also have a consideration of existing facilities with a buy-in for treatment and collection included in the analysis. In addition to the buy-in, there's approximately 12.3 million in capital infrastructure that's necessary. We've looked at that infrastructure and apportioned that cost based on the level of service and the proposed new development and allocated only the growth-related impact fee eligible portion of that future facility cost. We have also included existing debt related to treatment, but we have not included any future debt. So, we're assuming that future projects are funded through utility rate revenues and impact fee revenues. Those, again, are the main elements of the wastewater fee calculation. And then again, that then informs the proportionate share analysis, which is calculated on a fee per equivalent residential unit or ERU. So, looking at that information, here's the table that illustrates the details associated with a buy-in and future facility. Again, as I mentioned, we have treatment and collection buy-in and we've allocated only the growth-related portion, what's considered impact fee eligible, as well as when we look at future facilities, the treatment and collection component, and allocating only the growth-related portion within the 10-year planning horizon to the impact fee equation. In addition, we have a consideration of some impact fee interests that may be accrued over time. That's due to the requirement that impact fees go onto a separate interest-bearing account. So, often the impact fee funds will produce some interest earnings. And then we also have the professional expense related to completing the impact fee facilities plan and impact fee analysis. So, based on that, that data, it produces a total fee of $4,731 per ERU. And then we've broken that out into the treatment component and the collection component. Here you can see at the bottom of this table, the treatment component is 67.7, almost 68% of the total at $3,203. And the collection is the remaining 32.3% at $1,528. So, next steps are to obviously hold the public hearing and receive comment. And then if you choose to adopt those proposed impact fees, they are an increase above your current fee. And so, again, there would be that 90-day wait period before those would become effective. All right. Any questions for me?
No, no questions.
Looks like we're good there, Fred. Thank you.
Okay.
Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions or comments from the council? Okay. This is a public hearing, so we will open the time up to the public. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less and state your name into the mic. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion from the council.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve ordinance 2023-18, an ordinance of Twilla City adopting a wastewater impact fee facilities plan and a wastewater impact fee analysis and amending Twilla City Code Chapter 4-15.
I'll second. We have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio and a second from Councilman Hanson. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady. I also vote aye. That passes 5-0. Item six is a public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant, second public hearing, presented by Jared Stewart, the Economic Development Director.
All right. Good evening, council. Thank you. So, this is, as it's noted, a second public hearing. We've had other public hearings in the past for this, this grant and this project. I thought I would just read briefly the little small section from the public notice, but also from our scope of work for this project. This is for the CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Small Cities Program, which is administered through the Wasatch Front Regional Council, that for the Twilla City Sewer Improvement Project, which will be located in the Broadway neighborhood. And the objective of this is to talk about project scope, implementation, and how it might affect residents in the neighborhood. So, really, I'll read our scope of work. It's that this project is designed to benefit a neighborhood known as Newtown and Broadway that has aging infrastructure. And it proposes to perform a CIPP cured-in-place pipe sewer pipe improvement on five lines of sewer projects. It's about 3,500 linear feet. And essentially, there won't be any excavation and re-burying of sewer lines. This will allow us to replace and improve sewer lines without digging things up and burying them again. It's a really great technology that allows us to do more, more replacement and more improvement with, with less funds, I guess, right? Because you have a little less work that goes on. So, I, really, that's all that I have to present on. It's a somewhat intense grant project and will take time and work to get the money, but it's essentially $400,000 that we can use to replace sewers in our, in the neighborhood that needs it, that's aging sewer systems. So, a great opportunity. And initially, we had proposed to split over two years how we would receive the funds because that's what we were allowed to do. And there was enough grant funding this cycle and fewer applications submitted that they said, actually, we're going to give you the whole 400 in one year rather than spread over two years. So, that was a great thing for us. It's the third year we've applied for these funds and in prior years, there's been a mass of applications that have scored better than sewer projects, so, which are the most exciting projects, as we all know, right, Jamie? So, anyways, that's, that's all I have to say about it. I don't believe we received any public comments, although it was noticed several weeks ago and in the newspaper, so.
Did the city have to contribute an amount, like a matching grant?
Yes. So, there is a match to this that Jamie has budgeted for and I believe it's, it might be a 25 or so percent match. I can look up the number because I have it pulled up in front of me, but it's total, it's, our match is $225,500 and 500. Yeah, 225,572 is the number. So, total, it's an over $600,000 project.
Seems like a great deal. Nice work.
Double Armin.
The work isn't done, so.
True, true. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I don't know what could score higher than sewer.
Right.
I'm glad we got it this year.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay. This is a public hearing as well, so we will open the time up to the public. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion. Do we need a motion?
I don't think there's a motion. Isn't it just a public hearing?
We don't have to have any motion? Okay. No motion on that one needed. All right. We'll move to item seven, which is a public hearing and motion on Resolution 2023-30, a resolution of the Twilla City Council approving budget amendments for fiscal year 2022 through 2023. This is presented by Shannon Wimmer, the Finance Director.
Good evening, council. In your package, you should have a list of all of the amendments. I believe the last time we brought amendments for this budget to you was in November. You will notice that the majority of these amendments are actually for grants that we have received. We have several grants, especially for the library and just normal business throughout. Is there any? The big thing that we did have on this was those utility adjustments that we had at the pool.
I don't see it in the packet.
No, I don't either. Isn't it the exhibit to the resolution?
It says Exhibit A, but there's nothing.
Oh, I apologize. I'll give you a copy.
Oh, you didn't.
Yeah. No, I sent it in for the exhibit. It's supposed to be Exhibit A to the resolution.
We discussed it. Can we go make a copy for? Can we get him a copy? Do you want to go through it?
Okay. So, do you want me to go through them?
Um, I mean, we can wait till the copy. It's up to you. How many are there?
I'll email it to you. There's like five pages.
Oh, I was going to say, if there's like five items, we can go through them. Now, five pages. Okay.
Could we just wait for, could we just wait for the copy and then come back to this? After the next one? Yeah.
Do we have to table it to do that? Or can we just?
I'll make a motion to table item number seven on the agenda until after item number nine on the agenda, while we wait for the copy. Is that long enough?
I think so. I'll second that.
Okay.
All right. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady. I also vote aye. So, we'll return to that after item.
No, you're.
Got to remind myself or else I'll forget. Okay. We are on item eight, which is Resolution 2023-27, a resolution of the Twilla City Council consenting to Mayor Winn's appointment of Andrew Agard to the position of Director of the Community Development Department. This is presented by Mayor Debbie Winn.
Thank you, Chairman and Council. It is an honor and a privilege tonight to present to you this resolution and asking for your consent to my appointment of Andrew Agard to the position of Director of the Community Development Department. Want to just tell you a little bit about Mr. Agard. He earned a Bachelor of Science degree from Utah State University in Landscape Architecture and Environmental Planning, year 2000. He has earned a Master's of Public Administration degree from the University of Utah in 2005. He holds a certification from the American Institute of Certified Planners, and he has worked as a city planner for 21 years, the last five of which have been for Twilla City. Andrew is a hometown boy and was born and raised here in Twilla City. And I have been just so impressed with the way that he has served our citizens the last five years as the city planner and also supported our previous director of Community Development, who moved on to, I guess, bigger and better. I think that he should just stay, but I don't know what St. George has that we don't have here, maybe warmer weather. But we do appreciate the service that Jim Bolzer provided to us for many years. And, you know, we made a comment that those shoes of Jim's were going to be hard to fill, but I want you to know that Mr. Agard will be able to fill those shoes very well. He is a very, very competent, intelligent individual who is dedicated to the servants, the service of this city. And I am bringing this to you this evening for your support.
All right. Any comments? Andrew, I think you'll do great, so looking forward to the work you do.
I would just like to comment, I had a chance to work with Andrew since I was on the Planning Commission and it's always been a pleasure to work with him.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve Resolution 2023-27, as presented by the mayor.
I'll second it. All right. A motion from Councilman McCall, a second from Councilman Hanson. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady. I also vote aye. That passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Then we'll move on to item nine, which is the swearing in of Andrew Agard as the new Community Development Director. This is presented by Michelle Pitt, the City Recorder.
I, Andrew J. Agard, do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Utah and that I will discharge the duties of my office as Community Development Director with fidelity.
Congratulations, Andrew.
I appreciate you. Appreciate your support very much and just let you know that while we're working to fill a city planner position, Andrew is serving two full-time jobs as he is working to fill in those, those two things, and I appreciate his service very much. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. We're coming back to item seven, which is our public hearing and motion on Resolution 2023-30. It was a resolution of the Twilla City Council approving budget amendments for fiscal year 2023 through, 2022 through 2023. We got lots of copies now.
I apologize, council. I'm not sure what, what I did there. But in front of you now are the budget adjustments that we are, that we are asking for. I can go through each one individually if you'd like, or I can just answer any questions. And I apologize, those weren't in the packet. Those should have been Exhibit A, so my apologies.
That's okay. Does anyone have any questions about anything specific?
So, like, like I said, most of these in here, there is all of the ARPA adjustments. You now have allocated all of your ARPA funds. So, you'll see the adjustments in here just to actually move the money where it was appropriated. But we are now at a zero balance for our ARPA. And then as we get payments from insurance companies for damages, there is some in here for some damage to the golf course, some to replace vehicles that were totaled out, and then grants. And anytime we get donations, we keep those in a trust fund until the department wants to use them for something specific that the donation was for. You'll see those come over in the Animal Control Department. And then, like I said, all the rest. We did get a $5,500 donation from Rio Tinto for the Wigwam project, so you'll see that in there. All of the rest of those are all grants on the, on the second page. On the third page, you'll see the water rights that we've already approved in council. And then, of course, some more grants. And then there's just some moving around of equipment funds that are being rearranged for what they were purchased for to get them into the right accounts. And we did have a couple of leave payouts for some employees that left. And then the fourth page, a lot of that is unexpected large amounts that we've got in the utilities that we, we've already talked about with some energy, mostly at the pool. But they did have some at the shops as well. And then our streets fund was affected both by overtime and by the purchase of road salt for this winter. So, you'll see some slight adjustments there for those. And then again, just more ARPA fund to get those where they needed to go.
Do we anticipate that gas bills, are they trending down now or are they?
They're getting closer to normal, but they are still mostly up.
I would like to report that our very last bill that we just got was $4,900 for the month instead of the $92,000.
That's a little bit of a difference, yeah.
It's a huge difference.
Good. Okay. Any other questions or comments? This is also a public hearing, so we will open the time up to the public if they want to make any comments. All right. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We approve Resolution 2023-30, a resolution of Twilla City Council approving budget amendments for fiscal year 2022 and 2023.
I'll second.
Right. A motion from Councilman Hanson, a second from Councilwoman Manzio. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady. I also vote aye. That passes 5-0. Item 10 is public hearing and motion on ordinance 2023-16, an ordinance of Twilla City reassigning the land use designation for approximately 25 acres of property located at approximately 450 South Twilla Boulevard from regional commercial to light industrial. This is presented by Andrew Agard, the Community Development Director.
Thank you. Before I jump into this, I would just like to take a quick opportunity to thank Mayor Nguyen for this opportunity to serve as the Director. I'm very appreciative of the confidence that she shows in me, and I'm grateful to her. I won't let you down. And I'd also like to thank the City Council. I've had an opportunity to work with each of you, some of you more than others, but I'm looking forward to working with you on a more regular basis. My office is always open to you, so please, if you want to talk about development issues or have some ideas or concerns, come in and see me, I'll drop whatever I'm doing to talk to you. My role is to execute the role, the will of the City Council under the direction of the mayor, and I intend to do that, so don't hesitate to come talk to me. If you got any ideas or critiques or anything, I'm willing to open my office for you. So this is a land use map amendment, and it involves a property that is located east, or excuse me, west of Tuilah Boulevard, east of Union Pacific, and north of 700 South. It's a 25-acre piece and is outlined in red. The City Council is probably familiar with it, it's a property that is, that Leitner Palma is looking to purchase. They need to change the zoning in order to accommodate the business operations that they wish to conduct on the site. In order to change the zoning, we are required to first change the land use map, because the zoning map has to comply with the land use map. And so the property is currently designated as regional commercial. The regional commercial land use designation is a land use designation that encourages and requires the research and development zone as well as the regional commercial zone. As you're probably all familiar with, this area was originally designated as regional commercial because at the time, Utah State University had some very grand plans to have a rather large educational and research facility in the area. Utah State's still there, and they're still interested in operating there, but I don't believe their plans are as large in scope as they used to be, and so reconsidering the use of this land is appropriate at this time. And so in order to accommodate the uses that are proposed by Leitner Palma, we need to look at changing the zoning to light industrial. Light industrial zone would accommodate their, their manufacturing desires on the property. The land use designation of light industrial incorporates the light industrial zoning district as well as the industrial service zoning district. And so that's what's being requested, pretty simple request at this time. This item was a public hearing, required notices, the Planning Commission did take public comment. In fact, I don't think there was any public comment at this particular item, but they voted seven to nothing to recommend approval for the land use map amendment to light industrial. So that's all I have on this application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them for you. I know Jared's also here, and he's itching to talk about it too, so.
What's the one item, there's one regional commercial that's going to kind of be on an island, what is that property?
That is a city well.
Okay.
And Jared and I were formulating another zoning map amendment to incorporate a larger portion, and I think we're just going to go ahead and include that well property just to get it in conformance with the rest of the surrounding properties, so we'll, we'll address that later.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, this is a public hearing as well. We've got a couple more public hearings, so take your opportunity to come make a public hearing, right now is the Publix. All right, seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve ordinance 2023-16, an ordinance of the Tuilah City reassigning the land use designation for approximately 25 acres of property located at approximately 450 South Tuilah Boulevard, from regional commercial to light industrial.
Second.
Right, a motion from Councilwoman Manzio, a second from Councilman McCall, we'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
Councilman Graff.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilman McCall.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, I also vote aye. That passes 5-0. Item 11 is a public hearing and motion on ordinance 2023-17, an ordinance of Tuilah City reassigning the zoning for approximately 25 acres of property located at approximately 450 South Tuilah Boulevard, from RD Research and Development to LI Light Industrial, presented by Andrew Agard.
Thank you, Councilmembers. This is a follow-up application to the one that was previously discussed. This is the zoning map amendment, and now that the land use map amendment has been approved, the, requested to rezone the property to light industrial zoning district, and that is in compliance with the, with the land use map. If you have any questions, that's about it.
Any questions or comments? Okay, this is a public hearing, we will open the time up to the public. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'd just like to make one comment, because I think it's important to note that we've piecemeal, piecemeal changed the zoning in this area, so I think we have to look forward to the overall zoning that, that is being worked on right now, and I know you guys live up there, and I think you did comment at the public hearing at the Planning Commission, but I think it's, we're, we're moving in a better direction than this piecemeal business coming in and willy-nilly assigning zoning, so I think we're working in a positive direction, and that's why I'm supporting this, because I think we're going in a good direction where we can have a business park zoning and we can get the things in there that we want in there, that will be better for, good for the city, good for the neighborhood, good for all around, so that's, you know, you didn't get up to talk, but I know that you're thinking, so I just want to say that.
Reading your mind. All right, any other comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve 2023-17, an ordinance of Tuilah City reassigning the zoning for approximately 25 acres of property located at approximately 450 South Tuilah Boulevard, from RD Research and Development to LI Light Industrial.
I'll second.
Right, a motion from Councilman Hanson, a second from Councilman McCall, we'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilman Graff.
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, I also vote aye. That passes 5-0. Item 12 is a public hearing and motion on ordinance 2023-19, an ordinance of Tuilah City reassigning the land use designation for approximately .28 acres of property located at 248 North Garden Street, from medium density residential to community commercial, presented by Andrew Agard.
This is another land use map amendment, and it involves the small property highlighted in red on the aerial photograph, if I get my click share to work. Okay, so the property is located immediately east of the Vasa Fitness, just east of Garden Street and then west of 100 East. It is currently a vacant piece of land, it is occasionally used for the storage of trailers and other, other items. The property is currently zoned R17, which is a residential zone for single family, and the current land use designation of the property is medium density residential, which is a land use designation that encourages and requires the R17, R18, and R110 zoning districts, so it's a, it's a designation that's exclusive to single family residential. When we amended the land use map a couple of years ago, it was determined during that time that Garden Street was going to be the delineated boundary between commercial and residential, and that's what was approved, and it's what's currently in place. However, land use maps can change, land use maps are plans, and so this is an opportunity to look at this property, whether it's better served as residential or as commercial. The applicant is requesting the commercial, community commercial designation. They would like to utilize the property for commercial, they have indicated on their application, they would, they would do a salon or a laundromat. If it does go to community commercial and ultimately to commercial, they would be permitted to do every use that's permissible in the general commercial zone. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on April 26, and they voted six to one to recommend approval of the change in land use map amendment to community, to community commercial at the time, so that's the nature of the application. If you have any questions, happy to answer them for you.
Any questions or comments?
I, I honestly really struggle with this, because I realize that we can spot zone, it looks like a little bit, but I don't know that it's right, and there were comments at the Planning Commission, there was a gentleman who came, he has a home near there, and you know, talked about the traffic and this thing, you know, and the parking on the Garden Street, et cetera, but it is a residential neighborhood and there are houses there, and although the lot is vacant, and I am a huge proponent of commercial, I just am not sold that it's the right spot for that. Just my thoughts.
I kind of have the same worries, especially with Garden Street, we know the struggles that we have on Garden Street already, specifically with parking, and if that street could even take a lot of traffic, and then my other worry is where does it stop, like do we keep rezoning other properties in that area, because there are other vacant fields in that area that.
Yes, there are.
I think the neighbors might want to do the same thing, so I'm hesitant to, to do that, so.
I think the, the person that came in that was most adamant was right next door, yeah, to where this is going to be. He has his show cars in the garage in the back of his place, so.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, this is also.
I have a problem with, with Garden Street as a, as a, I travel it quite a bit, and it, it is a narrow street. I, I really think they could probably find a better place to put it, only because of that, the nature, because it's, even like right now when we leave, if someone's parked on Garden Street, you literally have to wait for a person to pass you, to get by, two can't do it, and putting more commercial on there, and I agree, there is another lot not far from this one that's vacant, and I, I just have a hard time with this, just going ahead and.
Okay. This is also a public hearing, so we'll open the time up to the public, and someone is coming forward, so please state your name and to the line.
I'm Kalani Mascherino, and I'm a member of the public. I also travel Garden Street because our office is on 600 North, and so I take it because Main Street is very busy, and so especially like, especially where Vasa comes out and that crosses, I just see that being a huge mess. Also, in case you missed SWIG Day last week, it was all the way down the street. Well, already at 500 North, where Pete's Auto Arama is, they're, they're always blocking the street further, and it's getting further and further down Garden Street, so you, I mean, you're just taking your chances on Garden Street, but I do travel it a lot because it helps me skip part of Main Street to get back, you know, now that we have, UDOT has divided Main Street, it helps me get around quicker-ish, if you can get past the cross street, so I just think, again, if it's a salon, a dog wash, or whatever, I mean, how, how busy is it? Is it just going to be another drink spot so that people can, you know, a drive-through which would make it even busier? So that's all I have to say, and I will sign your paper now.
Thank you. Hey, what else?
I'm just not sure if she was against it or for it. Well, yeah, you just try, you don't want to be able to drive down, I'm just teasing you.
Anyone else from the public? Okay. Seeing no one else come forward, I will close the public hearing and turn the time back to the Council. So just when Kalani was talking, I think that's my concern, is it could be any type of business that could be in that zoning, and so that is my biggest worry. I think there are certain things that would work well there, but we don't have the control once we rezone it, so I'm not in favor of it. Okay, any other comments?
I agree with what you said there, because you could do a, if it was a dog grooming thing or something and it was limited to whatever, that would not take hardly any parking, but if you had the drink place over there, yeah, we'd have two of them in one block and it would be terrible, so, yeah. Or something even different that's even busier yet, so.
Okay, any other discussion on this topic? If no, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we deny approval of ordinance 2023-19, reassign the land use designation for approximately .28 acres of property located at 248 North Garden Street, from medium density residential to community commercial.
I'll second.
Right, a motion from Councilwoman Manzio, a second from Councilman McCall, we'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilman Graff.
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, I also vote aye, so that gets, does not get approved, 5-0. Item 13 is a public hearing and motion on ordinance 2023-20, an ordinance of Tuilah City reassigning the zoning for approximately .39 acres of property located at 60 South Main Street, from GC General Commercial to MU-G Mixed Use General, presented by Andrew Agard, the Community Development Director.
So this application is a follow-up to one the City Council recently heard. It's for the Beacon House, that involves the old Gordon Furniture Building, located north of 100 South and west of Main Street. The property is highlighted in red on the aerial photograph. Basically, it's an existing building with an existing parking lot located to the west. The property currently bears the general commercial zone. The applicant recently went through a land use map amendment where they changed the land use of the property to mixed use, and that was in order to facilitate an application to the zoning map amendment for changing the zoning to mixed use general. The reason that she is doing this is she wishes to have a residential treatment facility in the upper floors of the existing building. Her plans are to have some healthcare providers on the ground floor and then have some residential treatment above. The general commercial zone does not allow that use, and so she's gone through the process of changing the land use map amendment and now the zoning in order to facilitate that use and that activity. So the property, the land use map amendment was approved, and it was changed to mixed use general, and then the zoning is being requested for mixed use, mixed use general as well, in order to facilitate that use. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on April 26 and voted seven to nothing to recommend approval, and I have not received any other comments regarding this application since then. That's the application. If you have any questions, happy to answer them for you.
And any questions or comments?
I hate to be the Debbie Downer, but.
Debbie Downer.
Sorry. I, I believe that this is great zoning. I think we should be able to have residential above commercial downtown, and I think we should, that's, should be our goal. My problem is, this is part of the downtown overlay, and our Downtown Alliance has been working really hard to get businesses that will generate tax revenue and get people in our downtown, and I worry about this type of use not meeting those goals. So does it generate tax revenue for our downtown area? And is that what are, you know, with the goals we have for downtown area, I'm not saying I don't like treatment centers, we, I believe we're getting a large treatment center further up in, you know, Main Street, not in the downtown overlay, and that's my concern, is in the downtown overlay, we want people who are living in those apartments who are going to come down and shop in the stores in our downtown. So I have some mixed feelings.
Could I, could I address that comment?
No.
At the last Planning Commission meeting, the applicant did, did offer some comment, and she said that this was one of the possible uses, the other one was just using the upper floors as, as residential. The mixed use general zone does permit some mixed use, it does permit residential above the ground floors, so even if she didn't go through with the residential treatment facility, the zoning would still allow the residential upstairs, and it doesn't have to be a residential treatment facility.
Is there another designation that would differentiate residential, living versus allowing a residential treatment center?
There's not, no. Both uses are permitted in the zone. The general commercial, however, does not permit residential upstairs. I just remember saying that, just wanted to bring that up.
If the zoning is changed, though, then we have to allow anything that comes through that meets the zoning?
Yes. Once the zoning is approved, that property is entitled for every use in the zone. And the mixed use general allows every residential use along with a wide range of commercial uses. You could have multifamily, you could even have a single-family home on there with the mixed use general. There's an existing building there, but that's just one of the uses you could do there.
They could essentially make it into a multifamily
They could.
... structure.
And they'd be limited to 16 units per acre on the property.
I mean, in this area, I think that is the long-term goal. I know we've had discussions or I've discussed with the mayor or some council members about having this area have a residential component so we do get more foot traffic down in the downtown area. So that's why I'm having a struggle as well. I think it is an appropriate zoning for it.
This lady is active in the Downtown Alliance group, very active, involved in that. And I, I originally thought that's what she wanted to do was have housing up there. I was surprised when it came to the Planning Commission as a treatment center, so.
Yeah, she's had, she's had a couple of options that she's been considering. The first one was doing a group home. And she got a conditional use permit for that a couple of years ago. And now she's changed the application to more of a residential treatment facility. But I think she's also open to just regular housing upstairs in the building.
So we can't, I guess we can't approve a zoning and say, well, but you can't do this particular thing. I know they do it on, in the Planning Commission, when they do a conditional use permit, you can, you can state a limitation. But I don't think we can on this, right?
I believe the city council can approve a zoning change conditional upon specific uses. The issue we get into with that is it's very difficult to keep track of those.
That'd be your job.
But it's a legislative matter. And if the city council wants to do that, you can do that. And we'll have to keep track of it.
I have a problem doing it, doing that, in a sense, because once you do it, then you're kind of sort of bound to do it again, you know? And, I don't know. I honestly thought that we had discussed it one time, that we were going to look at the entire area.
Me too.
And just do this zone for the entire area.
We did.
So we didn't have to nitpick, you know, one at a time. And so, I'm sorry, I was just thinking, I'm like, I thought we was going to do the whole place. But we only had, what, one, maybe two meetings about that?
Well, we discussed it when, with the land use map, right? I think, if I remember right, that's when we had talked about maybe this whole area needs to be a mixed use, so.
Because there is other two-story buildings in that area. And if we're going to encourage them to do that, we, I don't see why, just, just do them all.
We did get, we did get several letters in the land use change about some of the activities that were going on in the parking lot and such.
We did.
Yep.
But it's a private parking lot, right?
It is.
And that was, and then I think Chief Day had said he hadn't heard about a lot of the concerns that were addressed in the letter. I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, I think so.
This was weeks ago, but, okay.
I mean, where I stand is, given the intent of the use, and given that we're up to deciding a zoning change, I would rather, I'd feel more comfortable with a conditional zoning change. Because just looking at the use of that area and redevelopment, that remains a concern of mine. And, and I'm looking at another area of town where there was a treatment facility and I saw the usage. And that was a little bit concerning to me. So I want to be cognizant of that as I'm looking at this area, as we're redeveloping it. And I think there are good places for residential treatment centers. This particular spot causes me pause. And so that's, that's where I'm landing on this.
The thing that, I mean, the concern you have is, is people out in the parking or hanging out or whatever, right? I assume.
That's one
We have the same thing right next door with the, with the Resource Center and the food bank, right? There's, you have the same people. Even if that doesn't happen, there's still, we still have them there.
In the same vicinity?
I'm just, just throwing that so you know that. They're still going to be there.
No, and it's, it's not, my concern isn't people being there, it's just, there's a difference between a temporary spot and a more, and a living spot. And so for me, it's like a store, like 7-Eleven or, you know, you have traffic that goes to 7-Eleven, but there's an enforcement if they're loitering, right? And, and I'm not picking on anyone. I think there's a lot of people who need help. I'm just looking at that particular place, that particular usage. And we're spending so much time redeveloping that area and helping our business partners. And I'm just thinking, is there a better place? And to me, the answer is yes. But that's my opinion. And, and looking at this one, I, if it's residential usage, I am fine with that. Because, and I guess I'll stop right there, but that's my thought. So I just wanted to explain that and explain where I'm coming from in trying to find that kind of thread the needle, what's the best option for that particular spot, but allowing that private property owner to utilize their property. And I think for residential, I'm comfortable with that. And I don't want to prevent that because that's kind of our long-term goal. But I think there's a difference between residential usage, multifamily usage, and a residential treatment center in that particular spot. I don't want to disparage residential treatment. I know its importance. But I also know that there's better spots to use it that's going to be more conducive for, for the whole community.
Didn't we just add, oh, go ahead, Roger.
Thank you. Like, we heard a couple of questions I thought perhaps I could answer to. Councilman McCall's question as to zoning the entire area to allow these facilities in the mixed use general. We had a discussion at the time that we changed the city code for that zone. And I asked the council if they would prefer to look at the area or this single parcel. And I recall it being the consensus of the council to, for now, just look at this single parcel. But that could be reviewed at some future point if the council wished to expand the areas in which the residential treatment facilities were not to be allowed. The other question had to do with imposing conditions on the rezone. And I agree with Andrew's assessment on that. It can be done and it can be difficult to track. The times when you've done it is when a developer has made a specific representation that this is what I'm going to do in this zone. And the council wants to allow that specific use in that zone. And so the council limited the rezone to the proposed use. I do believe that can be done. I think the best way to track it would be to amend the ordinance document to conform to the council's vote. So that the condition is built into the very ordinance itself. We don't have to track minutes or recordings, it's in the ordinance, albeit we still have to track the ordinance. I hope that may help with those two questions.
Didn't we just add to the mixed use though, the, the ability to have a residential treatment facility? Wasn't that a change that we recently made?
Yes, that's very, I think that was done two and a half months ago. It's pretty recent.
For the South Main.
Yeah, and that's, that's how that facility be, it was okay to have it there, so.
And the question was whether to rezone that whole area from general commercial to mixed use general in the downtown area so that that use could be allowed in the entire downtown area. That was the route the council chose not to do at that point in time. And that's my best recommendation.
Where does the mixed use start? Isn't it just south of, okay, yeah, of 400 South?
Yeah, it extends all the way down to the south end of town, where that Lutheran Church is.
Is that 400 South on the map, though? Because that's First South, right?
Well, I must have mislabeled that one.
It's not as far in my mind as
No, it's not. Like, Fourth South is way down. No, that's 100 South.
Yeah, that's one.
Okay.
Chairman, if I could just maybe make a suggestion at this point, and I don't know if it's voting on this or tabling it for the moment, but I would really like to work more with the Downtown Alliance and the master plan that we are putting together for the downtown area. And maybe it creates a new zone all on its own for just the downtown area that would allow for residential living upstairs, but maybe not any other kind of businesses. And I'm not picking on residential treatment because I'm all for those, because we need those in our community. And I think that maybe instead of just rushing to do just this little section and having general commercial all around it, that we really look at what we do want in that downtown area and we create a zone that will give us what we're looking for.
Okay. Anyone have any other questions, comments? Okay, this is also a public hearing, so I'm going to open the time up to the public. Just state your name into the mic and then three minutes or less, please.
Kalani Mascherino. Becky Harvey. I have concerns about, I don't, the treatment facilities are needed. I don't think all of the thoughts are put into that when they're approved or in plan. Like, the old Harris, at one time that was going to be something. Now it's transitional housing. If you watch the activity between those places, it's alarming. Same as Garden Street, same as 100 South. I just don't think putting a place where the problems lie to give those people more access to what they're battling in the first place is a good idea. So I think it's a horrible location for that. And it'll cause more problems, not only for the food bank, but the Kirk, Drive Delight. I think it'll harm all those businesses.
Thank you. All right, anyone else from the public? Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing and turn the time back to the council.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say I'll entertain a motion if someone wants to make one.
I'll make a motion that we table this until a later date.
Can we just say, can we just say a later date?
Well, just, no, till the next meeting. That'd give us enough time to possibly get with the Downtown Alliance and
You think that's enough time?
Work of what the mayor suggested.
Do you think that's enough time, Councilman?
I actually don't, no.
Six months?
A month.
A month?
I think six months myself. It's going to take some time if you're going to work with the Downtown Alliance and create a downtown plan. It's not going to happen instantly. Everybody's got a lot going.
So I'll just make a motion that we table this for two months.
Two months?
And then bring it back and we can table it again if we need to.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman McCall, a second from Councilman Graff. We will take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
I was, I was actually not for table, I was about, I was out for denying it. So I'm going to vote no, even though it's going to table it. Just because I thought we should just deny it and start over. But, yeah, yeah, that's why I wanted to explain myself.
Okay. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, I also vote aye. So that is tabled on a 4-1 vote. Okay, item 14 is five-star minor subdivision request by Cameron Dorch to create four industrial lots and four accompanying railroad parcels for approximately 19.4 acres located at approximately 1471 West L Avenue, presented by Andrew Agard.
Thank you, council members. This will connect. There we go. So this is a minor subdivision application. It involves the 19.4 acre parcel highlighted in red in the Industrial Depot, the Peterson Industrial Depot. As you can see, there are four large warehouse buildings on the property. Property is currently zoned PID Industrial, which is almost identical to the industrial zone. So all the zones, surrounding zonings are industrial. What the applicant is wanting to do is, is they want to separate the parcel into four individual lots, ranging size from, I believe, I think it's 8.9 acres, 365,000 square feet. They want to, he wants to sell each individual building. And so in order to do that, he's parceling the property into four lots. There's some railroad, railroad access parcels that are associated with each lot. Those will go with the individual lots. There's no new development associated with this. It's really just ownership issue. He just wants to sell his, his buildings. The lots all meet the minimum requirements in the industrial zone for lot width and so forth. So there wouldn't be any nonconformities created with this subdivision plat. So really straightforward. It's just an ownership situation and staffs recommending approval. The Planning Commission, I voted seven to zero to recommend approval when they, when they reviewed this. And there's some basic conditions in the staff report, just in case we miss something. But that's the report of the subdivision.
Okay, any questions, comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the five-star minor subdivision request by Cameron Dorch as presented.
I'll second. Motion from Councilwoman Manzio and a second from Councilman Hanson. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, I also vote aye. That passes 5-0. Item 15 is Resolution 2023-36, a resolution of the Tuila City Council tentatively adopting the budget officer's tentative budget for Tuila City fiscal year 2023 and 2024, and establishing the time and place of a public hearing to consider its adoption. This is presented by Mayor Debbie Williams.
Thank you, Chairman and Council. This resolution is presented to you tonight to tentatively adopt the tentative budget for our next fiscal year and schedule the final adoption to be, to take place on the 21st of June, 2023 at 7:00 PM. And because you are just receiving this tonight, you'll need to do a lot of studying to get through it. And, and what we would like to propose is that we schedule a work meeting for our regularly scheduled meeting in two weeks for our council on May the 17th, to have a great budget discussion. And again, on June 7th. If we need more time and need more meetings, we can talk about it then. And you can set as many meetings as you feel like you need to before that date that it needs to be approved. You will also see in your budget that's been given to you tonight, the, the budget that we normally put on all of the spreadsheets, but also the easier budget to look at for the public. And both of those will be available for the public to, to go through and look at before that public hearing is held on the 21st day of June. I would like to read to you tonight, which is part of the state law that requires, that I put together, a statement to go with this budget. And I, I went through it and thought, I could really cut this down. And then I thought, nah, I need to, I really need to tell you all this stuff. So I'm just going to read it for you. City Council and residents of Tuila City, I am pleased to present to you the tentative budget for the fiscal year 2324. This budget is the result of many hours of work by the city staff and administration. Our budget process is intended to provide for essential services and enriching amenities to meet the needs of our residents while maintaining focus on the future in a public and transparent manner. Preserving the quality of life for our residents is important, and I am committed to making our community a place where residents are proud to live, work, and play. Each year as we go through the budget process, we face the difficult Each year, as we go through the budget process, we face the difficult task of balancing our operating and capital needs to match our available resources. As in the case with the majority of local governments, we are never able to fully fund all worthwhile programs or fund all projects and equipment. Our aim is to set priorities as we allocate resources by funding required services first and ensuring a level of service to meet our residents' expectations. The administrative staff and I met with city council members in early February to begin the budget process. Discussion points included employee salary projections and health insurance cost increases, property tax rates, long-term debt, sales tax updates, fund balances, and ARPA, which is the American Rescue Funds Act, projects. Our revenues. Although our financial advisors have continually encouraged us to maintain the current certified tax rate each year, we have let that rate decrease for the past four years due to the rapid increase in home values. This year's tentative budget is based on maintaining the current tax rate of point zero zero two four one one. Although there have been changes in the residential market over the past year, Twilla City is projecting a slight increase in home values in fiscal year twenty-four. The values for F Y twenty-four are based on values from January two thousand twenty-two to January two thousand twenty-three. It is expected that any decrease in home values will not reach the valuation process until fiscal year twenty-five. We have experienced a decrease in residential permits during fiscal year twenty-three and expect that trend to continue during F Y twenty-four. Studies of local sales tax is projecting a decrease of two point four percent in revenue for Twilla City. Overall, it is expected that revenues will decrease over the next fiscal year. Our capital, equipment, and projects. The city has made great strides in the past several years to replace unsafe equipment and vehicles. We will continue to fund these needs to support our workforce with a safe and efficient work environment. This budget includes an appropriation from fund balance in the amount of one million dollars for capital, equipment, and projects. Equipment lists include vehicles, security cameras, fencing, and other needed equipment for several departments. Designs for the new Twilla City Fire Station number three are complete, and we expect funding to be secured by November to begin the construction. Infrastructure and enterprise projects. Several road projects are moving forward this summer, although costs continue to increase for asphalt, labor costs, and other supplies. We continue to look for additional water sources for the city to provide for future growth. Work has begun on the headworks building at the water reclamation facility. This expansion will be the first of several upgrades to increase the capacity of the plant for up to fifty years. We will continue our sidewalk replacement program, which includes a fifty-fifty residential participation option. Our par tax and our capital parks projects. Plans for fiscal year twenty-four include the continued expansion of England Acres Park and the Wigwam Park. Pavilion and restroom facilities were recently completed. We will complete the playground and dog park at England Acres, as well as begin the construction of the trail system through the park and along the Middle Canyon Drainage Ditch. Continued funding to the Twilla City Arts Council will provide entertainment on the Fourth of July and all of the Fridays on Vine events throughout the summer. A permanent cover for Engine Eleven will be installed this year at the Twilla Valley Museum to preserve this important part of Twilla history. We are able to complete this project with grant funds from Twilla County. Employee costs. Without question, the ability of Twilla City to provide quality services to its residents is centered on maintaining a quality workforce. As we are all aware, these past few years, the labor market has been unique and very challenging. We have not been immune to this, and these challenges continue to put pressure on the city's fiscal budget preparations. Twilla City experienced turnover in our full-time staff at a rate of seventeen point six three percent in two thousand twenty-two. That was the highest one-year turnover in twenty years. Police turnover continues to be a challenge with our five-year average increasing from twelve and a half percent to fourteen point six three percent, but it is down from our two thousand eighteen five-year average high of eighteen point nine two percent. Early two thousand twenty-three recruitment efforts show an increased pool of qualified and suitable applicants with time to fill measuring, measured reducing. We are optimistic that turnover will slow down this year. We are optimistic. While increased health insurance premiums are expected each year, this fiscal year posed a unique and difficult challenge. In the early phases of our budget preparation, Twilla City was notified by P E H P, the Public Employees Health Plan, that our claims are substantially exceeding our projected costs last year by over one point three million. Based on this and their valuation of ongoing costs, if our plan stayed as is, our plan would need to be funded an additional sixty percent, which is equivalent to one million sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars, to be paid by Twilla City and our employees. Twilla City Administration recognized that this was not sustainable for the city or our workforce. Discussions took place on how to best align our direct and indirect compensation in light of inflation and insurance cost increases. The fiscal year twenty-four budget proposal includes changes to our health insurance plan, changes to the employee-city rate sharing structure, and other modifications. The final renewal came in with an average price increase of twenty-seven percent, approximately six hundred and eighty-five thousand, ninety-three dollars to be paid by Twilla City and our employees. The insurance increase impacted the city's proposed salary schedule adjustment. This fiscal year budget proposal includes a cost of, cost of living adjustment of five point five percent. The C P I in March, to March average for the last year was seven point four eight percent. We are also adjusting with a, including in the budget, a one percent adjustment as an insurance offset to realign our direct and indirect compensation costs in light of the health insurance changes. As a point of reference, the January two thousand twenty-three COLA adjustment for social security recipients resulted in the highest increase since the nineteen eighties at eight point seven percent. We have included no new positions in this year's budget. The city is confident that the proposed adjustment to our total compensation aligns with our goals to balance the need to attract and retain a qualified and capable workforce with our fiscal responsibilities to the taxpayer. In conclusion, I wish to express my appreciation to our Finance Director Shannon Wimmer and Shiloh Baker, Administrative Assistant, also Kami Perkins, our Human Resource Director, and all the department heads for the many hours spent in preparation of the budget. The new format of our budget books provides greater transparency to our constituents. I encourage our residents to take time to go through the document and learn about our city. The budget will be available for public review on our website at W W W dot TwillaCity.org. For those who do not have internet access, you may contact City Hall, and we will provide you with a hard copy or by email. And that concludes the presentation, and I look forward to budget discussions with you in the coming six weeks.
You had said at the beginning that we're going to do them at the work meeting, just at the regular work meeting.
Yes, just at the regular work meeting. I believe that we will have plenty of time to do that. We'll put that on the agenda. And again, if we feel like there's additional time needed, we can set as many budget meetings as you feel that you need to make a good decision on the budget.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right, I will entertain a motion on item fifteen.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-six, a resolution of Twilla City Council tentatively adopting the budget officer's tentative budget for Twilla City fiscal year two thousand twenty-three dash two thousand twenty-four and establishing the time and place of a public hearing to consider its adoption.
I'll second.
The motion from Councilman Graff is second, from Councilwoman Manzio. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, I also vote aye. That passes five zero.
I don't have a resolution for that in the stack, so I don't know if it's attached to one, like if it was.
We sent it too soon, maybe?
Or if it was, like, this paper clips were stuck, so sorry to interrupt, but.
All right, and then item sixteen, it's a Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four. I believe this is an item that we were going to table, right? We had mentioned in staff meeting. Roger, is that correct?
Yes, Chairman. We're still working with the, uh, health provider to finalize the site for the tower. And I just would feel better if we could finalize that site before bringing the agreement to you for approval, although we hope that we can have that done quickly.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we table Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Councilman Graff. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, I also vote aye. That is tabled.
Do we need to table it to a specific time?
I don't know, do we, are we required to? Michelle's shaking her head no.
Table.
Okay. Item seventeen is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine, a resolution of the Twilla City Council approving a franchise agreement with All West slash Utah for cable television services. This is presented by Roger Baker.
Thank you, Peter. Well, you, you have already approved a franchise agreement with All West Utah for the fiber optic cable. Uh, federal law, and they want to now provide cable television service over that fiber optic cable, and federal law requires them to have a separate franchise for cable television services. So that's where we're seeing a second franchise agreement with the same folks for the same, infrastructure. I, um, I would like, if you think it's ready to approve, I would like to, however, double check the rate that we can charge them. If you would, if you would consider approving this, but, um, put in your motion to charge the rate allowed by Utah statute, that would be great. It's either three and a half percent or five percent, and I'm still tracking that down.
All right, any questions or comments? So just to clarify, Roger, the motion should just specifically say that to charge the rate that the Utah State Code says we can charge?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, any questions, comments? Okay, I will make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine, adding to the resolution that we charge the franchise agreement cost of what the state of Utah determines is best.
Second.
All right. We have a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, I also vote aye. That passes five zero. Item eighteen is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five, a resolution of the Twilla City Council approving an agreement with Hanson Allen and Luce for lead and copper rural service line inventory, presented by Jamie Grandprey, the Public Works Director.
Thank you, Council. So with this resolution, I'm asking to suffer approval of the resolution for Hanson Allen and Luce to do a lead and copper rural service line inventory for the Water Department. The EPA and the State of Utah Division of Drinking Water gave us until October sixteenth of two thousand twenty-four to prepare and submit an initial service line inventory of all of our service lines. And with that, we have to place them all into four categories, either a lead service line, a lead status unknown service line, excuse me, which is basically the service line material that we don't know, and then a galvanized lines requiring replacement, and a non-lead service line, which would be like copper or poly, some other type of material. And so we have to, we have to put this plan together, so we're, we need some help from Hanson Allen and Luce to help us put this together for us. And so we reached out to them to get a price. They gave us a price of thirty-eight thousand dollars to do that and to get that process moving forward. We need to put most of our service lines in the one, two, or one, three, or four. We try not to put them in the unknown service lines because eventually we'd have to put them all into a category. So it's best, I think, just to put the, get the horse in front of the cart and just get it done and get it taken care of as, as, as soon as we can. So that's my request. I can answer any questions you may have.
I'm sure, I'm sure this is a dumb question, I'm sorry.
Maybe it's my question too, so.
Well, these guys aren't contractors. I'm just wondering how, do we have like maps of how it is and that's how they figure it out, or?
Yeah, it's, we're going to help participate in that a little bit because a lot of it's going to be like the newer subdivisions, we'll know all those or what kind of material those are, those will be easy to take care of. It's going to be a lot of the older town, it's going to be a hard portion to figure out what's going on.
How do you determine that? You go look down in the meter and see it's copper going to the house or what?
Yeah, well, they, we have to know, the state wants us to know from meter to main, so we're going to have to be doing, we might have to do some pothole and we might have to do some other things. It's an initial service line inventory, so, you know, that's where the unknown status could be for service lines for the initial, the initial portion of that. And so hopefully, as we kind of go over the next year or two, we can kind of get more of that figured out. What's what we want to try to do is get everything categorized into at least the four groups. And then anything that falls in group two, we'd have to try to get all of those put into either the other three groups.
Okay.
It's, it's going to be a step-by-step process.
It's not just them, we're working together with them to do that.
Yeah, 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 we're working with them to do that, and that's kind of their cost with the help.
All righty.
Is the thirty-eight thousand for them to help with that.
So is this a new requirement from the, you said the EPA and the Utah Division of Drinking Water? And we've never done it before in Twilla City?
This all kind of goes back to Flint, Michigan, if you remember that, so.
I do, yeah. Do you think we have lead pipes?
Yes, we do. I have one sitting in my office that we pulled out a couple of years ago.
All right.
And so we feel, we think that we do have one still in the system that we kind of know of, and that's our fire station next door. And so, and we might have others, but we thought we were getting to the point where we didn't have very many in the system, but we did pull one out a couple of years ago, and we think we do have maybe some others, but lead, kind of in the west, like the, the western United States, lead wasn't as prevalent as it was back east. So there's probably not a whole lot out there, but there's probably some, and especially older communities, so Twilla, some of the older cities probably still have some out there from a long time ago.
Any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three, twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Hanson, a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, I also vote aye. That passes five zero. Item nineteen is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one, a resolution of the Twilla City Council approving and ratifying an agreement with Broken Arrow Construction to install a Dural Last Membrane Roof on the Public Works Shop Building, presented by Jamie Grandprey.
Okay, this is one that I think Michelle emailed you during, between the last meeting and now, that we had this issue with the roof. The shop's roof kind of went downhill quite quick, quite rapidly this winter and got to the point where it was pretty much a shower inside the building when we had water coming in. So we had to get that, the roof fixed. We looked at repairs and we looked at a total replacement, found that costs were probably better for just a replacement. It's already been done twice already in the past, and the insulation material from the previous installs were already kind of wet and soggy and, and pretty much done with. And so we. installs were already kinda wet and soggy and, and pretty much done with, and so we, to the point where it needed to be replaced. And so we, uh, kinda got that going. Michelle helped us get the approval from you, so we could come back with a ratification on this resolution. The cost for that bid was sixty-two thousand five hundred and fifty. It hasn't been started yet, as we are waiting for materials to get this going. Another concern that we also had with this roof is it was going, starting to leak through the middle of the CMU block, and so we was afraid that if it was to freeze, we could start blowing that block out and then causing more problems, and so that's kinda the push to get it going, but then materials and trying to get materials ordered is taking a little bit longer than anticipated, so. So, yeah, so it hasn't been started yet, but we are bringing this for resolution tonight to, to get that ratified.
All right, any questions or comments?
It's gonna rain all weekend, you know?
Yeah, it's gonna rain too. Yes, it is.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move that we approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one.
I second.
Our motion from Councilwoman Manzio, and a second from Councilman Hanson. He beat me to it. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
And Councilman Brady, I also vote aye. That passes five zero. Item twenty is resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-four, a resolution of the Tuilla City Council approving a change order with Beck Construction and Excavation Inc. for the Main Street Parking Project, presented by Jamie Grandprey.
So we've had some, some updates to that that came about today, so I was gonna hopefully try to share some more information with you on this that was not in your package.
Thank you.
So the original resolution is, uh, for a, a portion of the sidewalk. So over there, um, at Main Street, they're putting in five new parking stalls that was awarded back in September of last year that Beck is now getting to now, because of the winter, kinda got pushed out for a little bit. With that, we have the five stalls. There's a section of, uh, grass that we was gonna pull out, put stamped concrete in. And then that kinda left another section just south of that, as you kinda round the corner to Vine, that's rocks. And so we wanted to kinda look at the possibility of putting some concrete in there too, to finish that out. And then there was some requests on the other side, down by the post office, of doing some more stamped concrete down there. And so the original resolution was just for one little section of stamped concrete that was kinda to the south of the five parking stalls. And that was for thirty-nine thousand two hundred and forty-three and twenty-five cents. Now, they, we added a few more, uh, items to the change order, and that's the one I just passed out to you just now, for sixty-six thousand one hundred and thirty-three and fifty-five cents. And that is to do the, the section of rock to concrete there at the corner, and to also add another stamp, section of stamped concrete on the north side down by the post office. And then where it says post office, items number twelve and thirteen, that's that little section just north of the access leave in the post office. There's kind of a section there of just rocks that has that big tree in it. I did want, I did reach out to Kyle to have that tree removed, but however, he didn't get it added to the change order. He only got the, uh, removing the gra, removing the gravel and installing the concrete. And so that's another eight thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars for that, and so I was kinda requested to see if we could add the additional monies to do some more of the stamped concrete and also finish that section up on, or put that section on the top. I keep saying top, the south end, into, uh, concrete as well. I don't wanna do stamped concrete with that, just because we get a lot of traffic, pedestrian traffic, that kinda goes through that area. Because technically, that's what stamped concrete is, is not pedestrian traffic. And so by just doing the brush concrete there on the corner, that's still making it still sidewalk, and still, you could use that for pedestrian traffic. So I'm not sure, Mayor, that's kinda what I got for that. I'm not sure how far.
We, we do have, this is a grant project from the third quarter sales tax from the county, and the, for once, bids did come in under the original amount, so we do have funds to cover this. Um, we've, we've left the one tree that is still alive. And we'll leave that there, and then the plan is also, they'll, they'll have some, uh, access to water, so that we can put some planter boxes that will look really nice with some plants growing in there. But getting rid of the rocks will make it a little bit nicer for people to use that area with stamped concrete.
So, so budget numbers, the grant was for a hundred and seventy-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty cents. The original Beck contract was seventy-eight thousand and seventy-one dollars, with a contingency of seventy-eight hundred. We have about seventeen thousand for engineering so far, so we're about a hundred and two thousand with that. Adding this sixty-six thousand and the eight thousand, the eighty-four hundred, puts us at about three hundred dollars over the, the budget. But that's counting the contingency, which we still haven't used, you know, so if we don't use any of the contingency, then we'd still be the seventy-eight hundred dollars ahead.
Any questions or comments?
Excuse me.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-four for the Main Street Parking Project.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Hanson, a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
And Councilman Brady, I also vote aye. That passes five zero. Thanks, Jamie. Item twenty-one is resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-five, a resolution of the Tuilla City Council approving a contract with PNL Construction Inc. for the Iron Street Sewer Line and Manhole Replacement Project, presented by Paul Hanson, the city engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for the record, it's been a long time since I've been item number twenty-one on a council, so it's a good, healthy meeting. Uh, earlier tonight, the age of Tuilla Army Depot was brought up, that it was built in nineteen forty-two, when the state, United States was in the early stages of World War Two. And it was built very quickly. It was built over a two-year time period with very limited resources. What that means is that some of the infrastructure that was put in place is losing some of its integrity. We're now eighty years later from when a lot of that was installed. And we're trying to use the, the funds as they become available. And one of the most urgent projects that we're requesting support on tonight now is replacing a segment of the existing sanitary sewer on Iron Street, which is toward the south central part of the industrial depot property. This project was put out for public bid in accordance with state procedures, Utah code annotated, and PNL Construction submitted a cost proposal of three hundred thirty-nine thousand six hundred twenty dollars. We have had experience with PNL Construction doing sewer line replacement in the city. Uh, those that have been around for a while may recall, they did the work on Caldwell Street, and they did a very good job for the city, very cost-effective on that project. So we would ask your support in authorizing that project. I believe it would be paid through a combination, Mayor. You'll have to remind me of, of sewer funds and some ARPA funds to make up part of the difference on that. Because we're digging in an area that is so old and so unknown, we're asking for our typical five percent contingency, which in this case would be seventeen thousand dollars, that would be authorized by you to be used as approved by the mayor as we get into the project. That is our request.
All right, any questions or comments? I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-five. Resolution of Tuilla City Council approving a contract with PNL Construction for the Iron Street Sewer Line and Manhole Replacement Project. That's costing a lot of money.
I will second your motion. We will take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
And Councilman Brady, I also vote aye.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. That passes five zero. Item?
Go ahead. Just for a second, I, I, it's not every meeting that we have ladies in the, in the audience listening to this. But I'm glad, because have you, have, just in case you missed it, did you notice how much money he just talked about? And the wonderful, and the wonderful. It costs a lot of money to run a city, a lot, and they haven't even talked about whales yet.
All right, item twenty-two is resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three, a resolution of the Tuilla City Council approving and ratifying an agreement with Dave's Custom Concrete for the Pratt Aquatic Center Concrete Park Strip Project, presented by Darwin Cook, the Parks and Recreation Director.
Uh, good evening, Council. Thank you for this opportunity to bring this before you, to give you a little history on this project. Back in, uh, two thousand nineteen, right before COVID, we began a project of, uh, removing what I would describe as ammunition from the front of the pool. Uh, every year, we were ending up with, uh, some of these rocks through the front windows of the pool. Uh, each one of those windows were costing about three thousand dollars to replace, and so at that time, uh, myself and our park supervisor decided that we would just remove the rocks and then, uh, put a solid surface in there. Uh, we started the process and getting, uh, con, uh, bids. We planted some trees in the meantime, and, and, uh, COVID happened, uh, and you know, pretty much everything shut down. And then after COVID, the price of the project reached to where it, uh, fell outside of our scope of the budget that we were, um, allocated at the time. Uh, we're bringing this back now. We're in a situation to where we can complete this project. We've designed it so that there would be stamped concrete on both the entrance ways coming in, and then we do brush concrete in the rest. Uh, there are four trees, or five trees, sorry, five trees that we've planted there that will stay. They'll have a tree ring and a tree grate over them eventually. Our goal is to create an area where, uh, during the Fourth of July, we can use this area to move and display cars during the car show, and then also just to improve the aesthetics of the front of the pool. We did send this out to bid. We received, uh, three bids, uh, from, uh, our contractors. Uh, we were hoping to give them an opportunity that they could move forward with this faster than what they were able to do, so this actually is coming before you to be ratified, but uh, all three of our current contractors that did bids were tied up in projects, and, uh, so the project is gonna start on Monday. And, uh, Dave's Custom Concrete was the lowest responsive bidder, and so we have awarded that contract to him, and here before you to ratify that and also answer any questions.
All right, any questions from the council? Excited to see it completed.
Yes, this will be nice.
Looks a lot better. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move that we approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three.
Second.
Motion from Councilwoman Manzio, and a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
And Councilman Brady, I also vote aye.
Thank you.
That passes five zero. Item twenty-three is resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six, a resolution of the Tuilla City Council adopting the voter participation area map, presented by Michelle Pitt, the city recorder.
Thank you. Um, during the two thousand nineteen legislative general session, House Bill one nineteen was adopted relating to initiatives, referenda, and other political activities. And it required that municipalities divide the city into four contiguous and compact voter participation areas of substantially equal population for the purpose of obtaining signatures for initiatives and referenda. On March fourth of twenty twenty, the city council approved resolution twenty twenty fifty-four and adopted the voter participation area map. Uh, since then, Tuilla County recently updated their voting precinct boundaries after redistricting, which requires amendments to be made to our Tuilla City's adopted voter participation area map. So the slide shows, um, the two maps. The one on my left is the one that was approved in twenty twenty. The one on the right is the one we're proposing for, for this year, for twenty twenty-three. So you can see the, the differences in the boundaries there, and that will include, um, the redistrict, the redistricting done by the county. So we're just asking that you, uh, adopt the updated map.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, I will make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six.
I'll second it.
All right, we'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
And Councilman Brady, I also vote aye. That passes five zero.
Thank you.
Item twenty-four is resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two, a resolution of the Tuilla City Council authorizing an inter-local election agreement with the Tuilla Count, with Tuilla County for two thousand twenty-three Tuilla City Elections, presented by Michelle Pitt.
Thank you. Um, this year, we'll be conducting an election, and the Tuilla County Clerk's Office has, um, traditionally assisted us with those elections. Um, we would like to formalize this agreement with, um, it kinda spells out the responsibilities of each party. Um, the estimated cost to be paid by the city to the county is two dollars per ballot, which comes out to be thirty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars per election, so that means if we have a primary, we'll pay the thirty-three thousand nine thirty-eight for that, and then we'll pay it again for the general election. Um, we believe in, it's, it's to our best interest to enter into this agreement. Um, the county has the experience, personnel, materials, and, most importantly, the equipment to run the election. So we ask that you approve this in our local agreement.
Any questions or comments? We'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two, a resolution of the Tuilla City Council authorizing an inter-local election agreement with Tuilla County for the twenty twenty-three Tuilla City Elections.
Will second.
And a motion from Councilman Graff, a second from Councilwoman Manzio. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
And Councilman Brady, I also vote aye. That passes five zero. Item twenty-five is invoices and purchase orders, presented by Michelle Pitt.
Thanks. Um, we have an invoice to Tuilla Motor Company for a twenty twenty Ram truck. This is for a brush truck for the fire department. Sixty-four thousand four hundred. An invoice from the Tuilla County Sheriff's Office. This is for the first quarter dispatch services. Eighty thousand three hundred and sixty-four seventy-five. And, um, we have a quote from Rocky Mountain Power. This is for, um, we're doing a project on Seventh Street for a roadway improvement project. We need to, um, relocate a power pole on the utilities there. So that is thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-five. And then we have a quote from CJ Trucking and Excavating. They're, um, working replacing a water line, and there's a, a section, there's, it's at the four hundred East Development. So there's, they have found some, another section of old water line. It's about seven hundred and seventy-five feet. While they're there in the area working, we would like to replace that section as well. It's fifty-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven fifty.
Is that the last one?
That's the last one.
Wayne's ready to keep going, so. All right, any questions? I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, approve the invoices.
I'll second your motion. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
And Councilman Brady, I also vote aye. Item twenty-six is our minutes from the April fifth, two thousand twenty-three city council work meeting and the April fifth, two thousand twenty-three city council business meeting. No changes that I'm aware of.
I move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll take it to a vote. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
And Councilman Brady, I also vote aye. That passes five zero. And item twenty-seven is to adjourn at 9:06 PM.